Calling to order, the Committee of Public Meeting for Diamond Lake School District Seventy-Six for Tuesday, March the fifth. Roll call please.
We're done. Haley.
Here.
Hoffman. Kessler here. Tyler here. Augur.
Yes.
How many has been this year?
Yeah, he's, yes.
You got it.
Okay.
This question.
A little allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
This time we open the floor for any comments from the public on our agenda item. I challenge whether, do we have any comments this evening? Have no comments, we give the floor to superintendent for presentations.
Thank you. We have some students that are being prepared for tonight. I'm Mr. Door. I'm going to go over to Mr. Door for a little bit of introductions. And Mr. Door will share a little bit about why this is concerning everybody.
Is okay if I do it from here?
Absolutely.
Well, good evening. It's always exciting, as you know, to showcase what our students are doing. And this really is an exceptional night because, as you know, Tracis even has worked very long hours with the class and with the community. And in that process, we have a bunch of students who like to help out and contribute to that process so that their community benefits. And interestingly enough, we have staff who attended support Tracy's closet as well. So Mr. Door thought what a great way to recognize students who are doing outstanding job because they tend to put in a lot of time and dedication to support Tracis even and the class here. And I agree with Mr. Door, they deserve to be recognized. So I'm going to ask Mr. Door to go up to the lecture and share any kind of words of students and give them your opinion.
Hey, good evening. I've been at this year Seventy-Six for, this is my sixteenth year. This is the first time I've ever gotten the trust of the board, you know, so it's a great opportunity. I would like to thank the board, first of all, and Dr. Charlotte Loos, and the rest of the staff for putting this program together and giving the teachers an opportunity to recognize students in District Seventy-Six and some of the great things that they do. So this year I started bringing home kids and volunteering for the community closet. One of the first things I noticed was not only the the opportunity of community support for the program, but also the students from West Oak who showed up every other Saturday and weekends for the second Sunday lunch, second Sunday lunch, and were an important part of this whole process of running the community closet. I don't think the closet wouldn't have been able to succeed the way that it did without these students' help. And they were all very hands-on and very actively involved in the process of helping people, helping communities that were in need. So what I would like to do is call up the following five students. By the time you come up, let's say I'll give them a call you up, and you're going to shoot it, shoot it for the back of the board. First student is Lily Hernandez. Let up. Please take a look for us. Next student is Karina Pachoa.
Awesome job.
Good job. Thank you. Part of our, or rather, our mission here is to make sure that we are supporting students in becoming life learners, we're engaging their community and writing through the world. So ladies, thank you so much for being engaged in your community.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to take victory. Would you sell behind us, so as I turn the poll over to Dr. Barack, who will be going to present on our student data? And I know again, we have some committee that likes to leave this time of work, so we're going to stay and hang on for a minute as well.
Well, thank you for a few minutes to cover the winter data presentation. I know in the past we typically do this in January and February, but we've lost a couple of board meetings due to snow, and I don't believe I was at the last one. So what I'm going to do is just sort of walk you through tonight's presentation. I'm going to cover last year's park data. In addition, that'll get people to go as soon as I start talking. That'll do it. But yeah, then I'll cover last year's access testing scores and then a three-year progression for math assessments. So just real briefly, this kind of gives a summary of the next several slides. I'm just going to cover the benchmark years in English language arts, grades three, five, and eight, and mathematics as well on park. And then at the end, I'll show some of the demographic differences within our district that relate to ELA and math proficiency. So here is grade, here are grades three, five, and eight as it relates to park assessment scores. Last year, you can see that about 22 to 30 percent of our kids meet or exceed, and we have about 20 to 25 percent of our kids are approaching standards where we still have a significant students that, significant number of students that do not meet or partially meet in ELA. Very typical or similar to last year, I should say. Additionally, you're seeing the same type of thing in math where we have grades three, five, and eight. Between 14 and about 21 percent of our kids are meeting or exceeding standards in math according to the park assessment, and we have a large number of students that are not meeting and partially meeting. One of the things that I wanted to mention is sort of the, a little bit of the disparity on our park assessments as it relates to our demographic groups. You can see that in many ways, the groups most largely represented in the approached met and exceed category tend to be our non-low-income students, whereas our limited English proficiency students still struggle with not met and partially met. We tend to see that same, that same pattern in math as well. Again, our low-income and LEP students struggling where our non-low-income students tend to be higher, more, more represented in the approached met and exceeded categories.
Does LEP concern simply separate categories or do they not?
Yeah, there are separate categories. However, there is a large correlation between those two groups. They can be one in the same. So what you'll notice then, moving away from park, moving to the the map data, what I'll show you is sort of a three-year trend. These are each cohorts that we've followed for three years. One of the things that you'll recognize is that despite some of the park data, our students do grow, and they grow well. They grow with national averages. However, when they get to seventh and eighth grade, we tend to see large numbers of students become English language proficient, and so we tend to see some greater numbers in seventh and eighth grade, greater growth in seventh and eighth grade due to so many of our students reaching that language proficiency, those language proficiency levels. So we take a look first off at fourth grade. So again, this is our current fourth graders going back to spring of 2017 and then spring of 2016. So it kind of gives you a three-year glance at these fourth graders recognizing that while they are still below national norms, they are growing consistently in both ELA and math. Tend to see that same trend in sixth grade as well, where our current sixth graders who were last year fifth and the previous year fourth are growing along with national norms with the exception of the fact that they're still slightly behind. And then we see our current eighth graders where you'll notice that our current eighth graders in their last three years have grown to exceed national norms currently at this point, both in seventh grade last year and eighth grade, eighth grade this year. Sure, please.
This data, what is it exactly? Is this index data or what is the vertical axis?
So the vertical axis rec, is there RIT score or Roushen? It's just sort of a proprietary gauge in which they, they utilize to determine a number or a scale for student growth. So students in third grade might score a 170, but then in fourth grade it might be a 183, and then in fifth grade it might be a 190 or that.
Does the numbers have actual meaning in the website? It's not just a quote, a priori, representation in the bar?
Right, it's a scale score in essence. It's a consistent scale score that starts in essentially with us in first grade and grows throughout eighth grade. It's the same scale all of those years. Again, it's proprietary, meaning the, the level of, at what point they are meeting standards according to the map assessment, but it is, it's a proprietary number that they utilize to determine growth over time.
Where the prior data is telling us that a large portion of our students aren't meeting that scale, this is telling us that they are early consistently with the norm.
Yeah, that's a great question. The park score is about attainment, where you are in comparison to your grade level proficiency. Map scores are about showing student progress over time. So two, two very different things, but also I will say that map is far more useful to us. It's been an assessment that's been used for 15, 20 years. Not only that, it's been consistent. Park assessments, although I think last year was the fourth year they were in place, have adjusted and changed each and every year. So sometimes I feel like with, with park assessments, with a lack of consistent consistency in their assessment tool, you're going to get some variations there, whereas I feel like with map, we're starting a year getting a number, a proprietary scale score. We're taking that same test again in the winter, getting consistent data and taking it again in spring. I feel like from an instructional standpoint, the map is a far more useful assessment to us than this, the state park assessment. We use it locally, it helps us make decisions. The park assessment once a year doesn't really allow us to make real significant instructional Any other questions?
I have a question.
Sure.
How many?
About park?
So this data is because, how many?
Yeah, limited English proficiency, yeah.
So because that makes up a large portion of our learners, it seems that the state overall comparative is not as helpful as looking at how our non-low-income, low-income and limited English proficiency population are compared to the state. Those statistics, is that comparison available?
Well, the Illinois School Report Card gives you a scatter plot which allows you to somewhat compare your student populations that may be limited English proficiency to to other school districts, limited English proficiency. But I would also be cautious there as well because not all limited English proficiency scores are the same, meaning that we, our limited English proficient students are in large part Spanish learners. Whereas if you go to some of the other communities around, like say, Scobe or even like Apptikisic, they're, they're going to, you're going to see LEP students that represent different groups that may skew just comparing one LEP group to another LEP group, Russian, Chinese, Polish. So you know, there's, those data points can be challenging to unpack and get, really determine their true meaning. There's a lot of dynamics that go into that.
Understood. The other two categories, would you have a compare?
Which?
Non-low-income, low-income, compared to state, non-low-income, low-income categories.
Yep, you can, you can do that as well. You can kind of manipulate the scatter plots to show, all right, with other student, with other populations that are 60 percent low, excuse me, other, low-income, where are they performing? Where are we comparing to other school districts that have 60 percent low-income? That's our current percentage.
Is that available online?
It is available online. You have to do a little bit of the manipulation on the school report card, but if you, I'm pretty sure if you go right to that front page and click on the assessment tab in the bottom right corner, there's a scatter plot, chart that you can, you can hit, and I think you can manipulate some of the categories on there.
Are the, I was just trying to say, are the standards you assign students into the LEP category?
Say that again, Michael, sorry.
I'm sorry. Are the standards for assigning students into the LEP category, are those objective enough across districts that, that is also meaningful compared to, you know, when we, when we decide that someone is limited English proficiency, is that the same as a child who may be put into that program in Apptikisic or other districts? Or is it, or is it different?
It is the same. The reason students are put into the student group of limited English proficiency is based on the fact that they've answered a home language survey that indicates that they speak a language other than English in the home, and then they take the access test. When you score below a 4.8 on the access test, then you're, you are determined to be limited English proficient. Then you get put into this student group, this category, where it becomes one of the multitude of student groups that exist, whether it's LEP, low-income, non-low-income, Asian, Pacific Islander, white, Hispanic, yeah. So it's, it's an assessment that determines LEP determination.
Sounds fairly objective.
Yeah, it's not as if we're, we're sitting in-house labeling students LEP or not. They have to take a statewide access assessment to do so.
John asked a question. Oh, sorry. What did he? So John asked, do the scale of the bar charts, it's difficult to see progress. Do you have percentage change numbers you could share?
I do not at this time, but I could probably, if he can tell me which, which bar chart he's referring to, I could probably get that information for him. If he's referring to the map assessments, there are actual numbers that correlate with these that I can share.
Let's wait for him to reply.
Any other questions related to park or map? One of the things that I wanted to just share with you before I move on to the access scores was just noticing that within our student population, we have, we have approximately between kindergarten and fourth grade, about 55 percent of our kids are limited English proficient. And so what you see is over time, utilizing map assessments that in first grade, when kids are young and coming into our district, over approximately 60 percent of them are below the national average in first grade, coming efficiency and then gaining as they, as they grow older. You see the same trend in math overall, but not quite as drastic.
Is this still math?
This is still math, yeah. So then I'll just shift now to the access test. And so just sort of like I shared a moment ago, the majority of students within Diamond Lake School District begin as English language learners and graduate as English language proficient. In kindergarten, we have approximately 58 percent limited English proficient, fourth grade about 55, and by the time you get to seventh and eighth grade, we're looking at about 14 percent. So there's a significant number of students who are moving from the LEP category to the non-LeP category. Just very, very basic here is looking at the levels of which access determines a child. So a student who's in the entering category is, is an early learner of English, whereas as you move from left to right on the horizontal access, that moves you towards reaching, which is to, to serve, to identify students as language proficient or English language proficient. So the point of this chart is recognizing that many of our kindergarten, kindergarten students are in the entering, emerging, and developing categories, and then as you see the students in fourth grade, they tend to move to the developing, expanding, and bridging categories, and by the time they reach the seventh grade, very few students are still with, within LEP. You know, so just sort of to summarize, I think it's important that we recognize that our students in this district grow, and they grow very well, and at, at the point where they're reaching their late middle school years, they tend to exceed national averages. We definitely increase English language proficiency. I think some of our strengths are that we have a really strong professional learning community culture now in this district, and over the last three and a half years, I think we've really been able to develop strong teacher leadership, strong teacher teams, and now also a strong dual-language team. We are making some progress in closing the achievement gap, but at the same time, we have a, a quality dual-language program which in some ways will slow down some of the English language proficiency because so many of our students are, so many of our limited English proficient students are learning Spanish in those first few years. So that will slow down their growth early on, but benefit them moving forward as they move into the later years as we've, I've kind of discussed with you guys in the past. And then for our continued areas of focus, I mean, we're always in the process of improvement to develop a consistent and viable curriculum along with assessments. We want to consistently see our students grow in all student groups. We want to continue to strengthen our community and parent academic supports. I think that's a key opportunity area. We are in the process of making great strides in aligning and strengthening our dual-language and Spanish language arts programs this year and over the last year and a half. And we have been in the process, I would say, over the last two years to really strengthen our RTI process as I presented to you just a few months ago. Any other questions?
So would you say the priority of the strengths, progress, and closing the achievement gap, what specifically are you referring to here?
Yeah, that's about moving students who are in that LEP and low-income area, moving them towards English language proficiency. And we, we are doing that. I think the challenge though is we sometimes see map scores and they give us positive results, and then we, you'll look at some of the statewide assessments like park, which are, they're less transferable. We, we understand and can manipulate our instruction through map, but taking a park test once a year is not allowing us to impact instruction based on those things. So we tend to look at closing our achievement gap at the local level, but recognizing from a park assessment standpoint, there's still challenges there.
Under the continued focus areas, what are you advocating for in terms of professional development in order to get the amount of progress you think we're capable of?
Well, I think there's a couple of things. I certainly think we need to strengthen our balanced literacy framework, and I think we've made some strides. But I think also, going back to what I presented on a couple of months ago, is that we need to continue to look and examine our RTI processes and make sure that we're appropriately identifying and giving the right support to students who are in that, in that LEP category. There's, there's two things. And so many of our students are in the dual-language program, and they're limited English proficient. And so they're going through kindergarten first, second, third, fourth grade, and much of their day is taught in Spanish. That's not going to necessarily translate to a quality park score for us, but we know that a dual-language program offers great opportunities in terms of learning Spanish, learning culture, being bilingual. So that's, that's one of the challenges that we face there with having a dual-language program. So it's, you know, it is, it's a focus on our bilingual system. It's an improvement in our language program. It's an improvement in our RTI processes. And I would also say in terms of professional development, we want to, if you'll recall, last year we adopted new math resources. And I would say that because of a new, a new math program, we've probably backswayed a little bit because what that sometimes does is causes us to rethink the way we're creating our school performance. And so I think some professional development needs to be focused in that area this summer as well. As I'm in the process of developing the summer Professional Learning Institute right now, those are sort of my heavy hitters. We're looking at our, our balanced literacy program, we're looking at, at math. We're going to continue to work with our RTI interventionist team to focus on, you know, to be in our, in our quality RTI plan.
I'd just like to, to mention and welcome you to the audience. So welcome. This is Ms. Juan. Thank you. Ms. Juan, Ms. Sullivan. In this presentation, we use perhaps a lot of acronyms. Yes. Is, is there anything that you heard that you'd like for Mr. Dr. to define for you?
I have a question on the front. What I'd like to ask is whether an assessment could be.
Yeah, so that, that's a great question, one we've had for a number of years now, trying to determine quality assessments that relate to a Spanish language arts program. There are not, we have map, we have park, we have all of these quality assessments that exist in the, that exist in the English language arts. But for Spanish language arts, it's very challenging. And so we're in the process of looking at developing common assessments that meet, that meet our, our proficiency levels in listening, speaking, reading, and writing. It's a, it's a challenging task. I don't know that I'm going to be able to present to you a, a map data report or a park data report. This would probably be more localized assessments. There are companies out there like the Apple Assessment that exists and that is for the American Council for the Teaching of Foreign Languages. And the reality behind those assessments is that they're, they're looking at native English speakers learning a foreign language, and that doesn't necessarily age what are in the entirety of our program. So those are some of the challenges that we find. There aren't quality resources and assessment tools for us yet in, in the Spanish language. And I would also say this, when it comes to language acquisition, it's not an exact science. So beginning to say that you can measure language acquisition based, based on phonics or phonemic awareness or vocabulary acquisition is not, is not an exact science. And what we're really developing this year is the And what we're really developing this year is the phonics framework for our K through two teachers that, that will be able, that will be able to gauge all of their understanding of syllables in Spanish language, K through two. And then from three, four, and five, it's really going to be related to our content acquisition, because by the time they get to three, four, and five, it's a fifty-fifty model. So they're, they're developing language in math, they're developing language in social studies, they're developing language, not just in ELA. So I know that's not a great answer, Margaret, especially because we're so accustomed to looking at PAR data and we're looking at MAP data. It's a sort of, some very unique and singular numeric definitions of where our child is at, and we really want those numbers to define that in development, but with language acquisition, it can be more challenging than just a number.
So would the, the assessment have some significance?
There was a short time in which we did a trial for STAR. So STAR, this is an assessment we use currently to like progress monitor students, but they had a Spanish portion. It was very inauthentic and didn't appropriately gauge what, what students knew or understood. Teachers felt that it was not a authentic, an authentic transfer of what they're learning in class and the language that they're learning in class to what that assessment was gauge.
So what do you know, are we tracking the language?
Yeah, so we, essentially what we do is we track phonemic awareness in K through two, and then you're going to utilize like your writing prompts, your dictados for how a student is writing, like you would in any other class, you know. So it's, I would almost point you in the direction of looking at their student target portfolios, because the dual-language team puts together student target portfolios, which helps us to gauge which, which skills are, are being developed and when.
But is there data that you can share out that like four levels that we can get a first standard, and a progress, and a progress, and a year? I think that you spend a lot of time and resources, I mean, we're, it just would kind of mess together a bigger picture.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I'm happy to do so, and I can always elaborate on, on the program and what the program looks like and the progress we've made over the last two and a half years in terms of redefining the program, reallocating minutes and structures to the program, hiring teachers, putting in place a phonics program. But I don't know that I would have a number to show you in terms of, our students are starting here at this number, coming from a multitude of backgrounds, and that's my only challenge, because I, I would love to tell you, yep, I'm going to give you this qual, but I don't have it. And I, I, it's not been without research, I promise, it's not been without research. I've, I've asked District 54, I've asked Crystal Lake, what are you guys using, what are you guys using? And it comes down to pretty much what we're doing is, is a student target portfolio, developing common base, common assessments that relate to phonemic awareness, understanding your syllables, and then being able to understand your words, improve your reading levels, you know. So what I might be able to give you is, you know, what, what FNP reading level students are at, you know?
I think it would just be good to see.
Yeah.
Part of it probably, I mean, my assumption is, I have some children, so I see it. But I feel like that would be, you guys have made kind of great strides, right?
Right.
It would be good to be sure that.
Yeah.
All the time and investing in the area that's, that's, this is kind of really cool.
Yeah, and thank you for saying that, because that is exactly what has taken place over the last two weeks. It's been a, it's been an awesome transformation to see that take place. You know, I, I wish I had a MAP assessment for you, and I don't, but I, I can certainly, you know, talk with my teachers about their FNP scores and, you know, share those things. I would also say something else, and I want to thank you all, because you supported our dual-language reading intervention, our K through two dual-language reading intervention setup. And I don't, I think you may know how significant an impact Ms. Duffy has made on helping kids who are needing to grow in Spanish that aren't growing. She's done an awesome job, and I know that she does keep some significant good activity. I can, I can reach into her deck and see what I can find.
If you could, if you could give us any data on that, that's right.
Yeah.
If I could, if I could, you know.
The next part of it. Say that again.
If we, if we cut the MAP data and cut, to cut, cut, and, and students who are in the dual-language program.
Yeah.
That, if we, if we, if we baseline the number of students.
Yes, you could do that. I could pull those kids that are just in the dual-language program. But you'd be measuring apples and oranges, so to speak, because what you'd be doing in kindergarten is, a kindergarten or in the first grade, students spend eighty percent of their day in Spanish. And so for me to then give them an English MAP assessment, which we do, but to then gauge their growth, I wouldn't be gauging their growth in Spanish, I'd be gauging their growth in English. It's just, it's just a challenge. I wish, and I'm sure eventually, assessment companies love to make money, you know, SOAR, MAP, all those guys got their hands in pot, and so I'm hoping that one of the, the Spanish companies will be the saints.
Over the past, the board has, for the administration, been aware that all teachers, I have been dreaming they need to be the students where they are, who are looking at, and then, creating.
Sort of differentiating, yeah.
Everything needed was. And we invested heavily in construction, in general, we invested in the need of students and, and we invested in special development in order to support students to hire and educate and teach children. Because that's, 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 you're, you're probably in, you, yeah.
I mean, you could certainly pull a subgroup in that arena as well. It would be, it would be a matter of identifying the students, and I believe what you're referring are the students that are in the advanced program, and, and taking a look at their specific, their specific growth. Am I correct in understanding your question?
It is, it is, it's my identification, it's certainly my part of that, and then the whole that best difference makes sure you're able to get a full range. But yes, it is, yeah.
Yeah, we could, I mean, from a, from a, from a MAP perspective, we're able to, you know, we're a small district, we have one hundred kids at each grade level. So we, we can begin to unpack some of those numbers and look at that, and look at that stuff. I'll say from a, from a, from a general trend, the kids that are doing well in the advanced program tend to continue to grow very strongly, and they tend to represent the, the students that are in the meet and exceed categories in PAR. So we do, if you take a look at our, at our data, we don't have mu- much of them middle. We have a lot, a large number of students that are in the upper sixtieth and eighth percentiles, and we have a large number of students at the fortieth and below, but not many between the forty and sixty. So, you know, we have, we have the capability to look and look at that data. It's not necessarily extractable through their programs, but looking at, you know, the students in those programs, we can, we can look at that data.
It's a value, we can, we can make sure that we are, to be, our mission, and we can follow us.
Well, you know, and what I would say too there is, one of the things I do think we do a great job of in this district, and with your support and with the support of the administration, is we build to the edges. Like, we don't build to the average, we build to every kid. And so we have advanced programs that are meeting the kids every day with our middle school and our elementary school, and even going back down to K one with Ms. Davis, and we have kids that have focused attention on them, and kids that are limited English proficiency, they're going through dual-language programs, and if they're not in a dual-language program, they're getting RTI pull-out services, they're trying to increase their reading levels, and we have teachers who are specifically focused on, on those students, and principals and teachers are meeting interventions, and we, every six weeks, looking at data, analyzing where kids are growing, what kids can move back into a setting where they don't need interventions, and which kids, which kids need them. So, I mean, I, I applaud your support in that. We are lucky that we're able to do that. We have kids across a wide spectrum of ability levels that we're able to, to build to the edges. I think this is really awesome.
Naturally, I, I, for, 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 for.
No problem.
Right.
Thank you. I don't usually get as much time as Eric, so it really makes me feel like I've spent this time, so thank you.
All right, here now moving on to our agenda, we're going to have a question. Some of them are, I, the first item up is the opposite gender, I have the opposite gender, are you ready to hand or non-controversial and only a group of information? Anyone who remembers staff from the straight-up position should have a separate vote up in the line, that either I, or I, or he, will be pulled into the opposite gender and go non-controversial. Your result is not a link to the support of education, except for the opposite gender , as listed. Any questions or comments on the, on the opposite gender? Okay. The, I agree, the result is not like some support of education, so we basically present with the dash, the copy, policy manual, like I mentioned, we have none of the special purposes, I don't. Comment that, it's like, I guess, they're, they're just related to our school district, so maybe they're not one of the, they're part of the, and then there's, and then it works, then if you hold, you're, you're, they, they're, and then you like, already started, and then you want to, you, 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 you. Any other questions? We got, we got, we got, we got, we got. Okay. The next item up is related to student fees. It results in like seventy-six support of education, because the early childhood, the pre-aged student fees, you thought nineteen twenty-four, you're asking, you're asking. You're, this is, you have, this is.
Really not.
But, but I put the question on.
I'll just point out, I'm proposing this year, a five-dollar increase in technology fees. This is the first increase I've proposed in the last two years. It's strictly related to, to HAWCs that we're occurring every single year now. Pedos require, they're mostly adult, so, so providing, it's whole, that's on people, and it's just, in addition, not like that, take the last two or three years. But let me conclude, it's worth these going forward. And also, the large increase I'm proposing, because I mean, there's classic sports fees, that we look at seven-five to eight-five dollars, and that's what the district's providing, a lot of increased transportation with these activities, whether we take students individually on that track needs, or providing more activity costs. Our cost headwinds, this is not offset our, our work costs by any means, you know, but it does help, and, and.
So can you speak to, and I know that we are charging comparable fees to districts around us, updating, providing costs.
And I call this, I have a interaction with this letter in form of that, because it actually shows me areas that are fees that did not make it in this one, and I will have a, 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 a.
Um, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't comment about, you know, public education, how you decide what, what things that should be in a public education, and, you know, our property taxes aren't quite high, we pay higher taxes than any of the present state as well, in terms of property taxes. And I'm just wondering really how important is it if we require families to pay, and for some family, even, they have, they have, for some of these fees, they are all by the previous election, not the current case, but still, some of these families, you, you a lot of payable fees, and it can be a lot, if you're helping kids, almost with kids in school, whether they're in, in, in this school, or, or, so anyway, just wanted to kind of throw it out there, what, what would the burden be for us to be on, like, with the cost?
I appreciate that, so, so there's, I look at it as three years' average, right, the deliveries that you receive, both package supplies, so they're about thirty thousand dollars. It's not, it's, it's, it's not that great, but we do make it, that offset pretty significantly source of supplies, and, and, so through the three, the families that are out of career dues, like, probably, if you get away with that, well, since we can include a small program, it's, it's, by these, very, small, apparently, available portions of, of, of.
So when you hear our history is, this happened, we're always, surround us, we're always in this way, it's happened in the last decades, is it, charging students always in this way? I think, I don't, I don't think any, I don't think any, I don't think, um, it doesn't charge of some sort, to, to, what was it, definitely, about this technology?
Yeah, I want to point out, looking back at some previous board meetings, and some student fee data back ten years, sometimes a constant decrease over that time span, most part of the means have been very, very stagnant for ten years. But I will look for some data as far as, whatever, there were, there's, for anybody that has more need for what this might be.
There's, like, if we, if we put a, 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 a,
Yeah, there are sports, it's, I think, that's, I'll play that. I guess the concern with the, um, fees are keeping the students good and, um, overall that, um, I'm sure, um, concerned. Uh, Mr. Wilber, I have a question for asking. Do you have a sense of that happening or, what is your take on it?
I do. Are you referencing, say, summer extended learning programs, or sports during the year, clubs?
Yeah, I think that the student have, have been, uh, do you get a sense that students, or some students that really do this, but because of the fees, their brand makes this not.
Well, if they're on free and reduced lunch, there's a laborious process. So, that doesn't prevent students from participating. If they're, if they're, if they're not qualified and they're frightened of hardship, then add a, if they will. Well, we also have a way of, you know, get the opposite, remember, you know, scholarships, that, um, or, you know, certain, yes. It's not illegal. But, um, there's just general staff numbers to support the kids. Um, last year, I know the board answer about summer school fees if we require children to come for the evening of the afternoon, to be charged one hundred and twenty dollars. And it's like, really remediation, and all that, just how it's been set up. So, we, we had three kids who actually, last year, and, um, of, of all the kids who were in the summer program, majority of the kids were free and reduced manage until their fees are lifted. So, this year, we just, because it didn't make any sense to do that. Now, if the children are in the STEM programs or the FUMES program, there's a fee for that. And, and our goal, and I work with Mr. Rogers and Mrs. Cooper, to see if we could lower the cost of the STEM or STEF FUMES program. But hopefully, we would have more children enroll and it would actually increase the, to cover the cost. It's not a revenue-making process, it's a breaking process, you know? So, that's what we want it to be. And again, if there's a hardship, um, there's, there's staff scholarships, whoever you look at, to help kids out. So, um, it is, it does affect our families. Field trips, that's why we're so gracious and thankful to DDL with the freight and bus. But these experiences are cheap. We don't set the prices, the institutions do, the bus company does. So, it's just, there's a reality that we have to deal with. And if we can defray that cost some way, you know, we want to do that. But I do know that there are children who, you know, this is how we talk about the dance for it, they sometimes spend the same, if the kids, the ten dollars, you know, but that's not true.
That is, and even the social team is very, um, yes, there is a program or, you know, a career or field trip or any type of resource that works, you, 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 together, I find a way to do it, whether it's a scholarship or contact in STEM or contact in, you know.
Remember, this was the trace six, um, baseball, gym uniform?
Yeah, that's, that's.
Is that the type of, maybe somebody said, "Do I have to have that?"
They get, you know, the gym uniform and the goggles, like, it's the first year they would start all that.
So, I do thoughts of getting a different gym.
We want to talk about the whole process of gym uniforms.
Good.
I'm sorry?
They got more on there.
They were big grannies.
That they, that is, we got the, the, the.
You know, like, uh, one of those, like, what, like, what you, you know?
Moisture, moisture wicking, very, um, something, it's not cool, cool tricks.
Uh, we have, too, I think we should discuss the whole thing, just in part, we've talked about it, you know? It's, I think we need to just look at how you dress appropriately, that's really what we need to start with.
Okay, so regarding these, I, I just, I looked at these numbers and I think that they're, these numbers could be painful or, or, I don't know, could be better to be able for, for families, you know, having to make a trade off for that.
And, and to be honest with you, we don't go through a collection process, so that's, there are fees that aren't, it'll be here, we try to fly as best as we can. The fees, if they got, if they double, it's not going to increase our revenue, you know, too full. It really just offsets a portion of our transportation costs and things like that. We do, we increasingly are providing opportunities to take it directly from rent fees to, to that transport.
All right, any other questions about these? The next item up is for action tonight. This is personal related. It was all done like seventy-sixth of education except for the personal items that have to be throughout the agenda. This includes two fees of absence and three presentations. Have some questions on these items? Any other questions to approve?
No. Second. Uh, Candel. Castler, yes. Stroud. Haley. Holland. Walker. Gaffey.
The next item up has to do with the contract for the Westover school. It was all done like seventy-sixth of education except for the contract for Mr. Peter, as presented. Comments, questions on this item? Comments, questions? Motion to approve? To approve.
Haley.
Yes.
Candel. Yes. Rigo. Holland. Castler, yes. Walker. Gaffey.
Yes.
Congratulations to Peter. Thank you. As you can see, we're very lively, we're, from the boardroom to the classroom.
All right, um, let's have a more discussion. I have an item relating to CDAL. This is a reminder, we discussed this in the last meeting. The CDAL meeting for this quarter was originally scheduled for this Wednesday, but it was then moved in order to coincide with the IASB, they count it. So, it is now scheduled for the thirteenth, thirteenth, which is Wednesday. And before the dinner and evening event of the IASB, I am not engaged in that meeting. The dinner is at five-thirty, or, sorry, the meeting is, the CDAL meeting is at five-thirty. This is an important one for CDAL, they need to improve their teachers' contract to send their services contract. So, if any of you are available, they don't even know, right? It wasn't, Todd, she, she, so, if any, anybody, make that line. All right, so that's all for the emails. Another topic is discussing the board revision. And this was, now we have those ones on the, on the online, we also have, um, the, um, the, and the IASB, the presentation was really clear about how all the next, um, the, the, the next four days, nineteen, which we need to report. Then there is the, um, the spectance, also the principal, also the chief. There's a meeting on the, and then there's a, the, 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 um, to, 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 I'm not, I'm not able to give you that, I, or, or, to, um, child, not going to, by the, 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 uh, able to, 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 to.
Who's like that?
So, our main A is the capital consideration on, um, the, but, you need to, um, um, you know, all right, all right.
May seventh, John. This will be okay. Yeah.
So, the, um, also, keep, for the last, the, 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 also, we need to know, gather, um, um, first, to give you guys, um, in that, um, for this two. Uh, and then, so that on the, of the, of the, after, you all, um, 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 whoever comes, um, after, um, it turns out some of these other activities can be, and the, um, to, 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 and, and, you were invited to, um, for them, or all, congratulations. What is your, oh.
All.
Any of all, oh. So, staff, the eighth grade graduate, certainly, that, if there will be, for all the, um, members, that is Thursday, eighth twenty-nine, at one point.
May twenty-ninth is a Wednesday. May twenty-eighth is a Tuesday.
But it is the twenty-ninth.
Wednesday, May twenty-ninth, eighth grade graduations, um, the, our seventh, autumn of the, 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 yes, we, 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 we. Eleven, eleven. Any other questions on the board conditions? And then, based on, if any of the board members have a switch in the step hall, he needs a dance notice, and we're, we should, um, um, um. Awesome, okay. Any other more discussion comments? We had. Uh, you got it. Since one group, the fish request, do we have any notices and communications?
Yeah, I saw it. Do you, do you, do you, do you, do you?
I don't, you are, it's, it's, may first, it's, it's, I think you guys, okay, I think it's, um, um, um. Save for the, um, anything else? Right at the center of the floor, to the public, for any comments on any other items?
Next, Mrs. Sullivan. Um, just wanted to come back to the, the data, um, you know, and, you know, and, um, the, 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 um, I think we just, wait, we start.
Second.
No idea if I have to, um, look more deeply into that. I don't know that I've developed any sort of correlation, um, or, um, yet, um, student growth. I know that, um, options in seventh grade students, have grown quite significantly, or, um, several years, um, and that could quite possibly be to that, but I think there's so many variables, you know, that, that maybe just, you know.
We're asking about academic, um, data, but, I think, other relevant data we can turn, you know?
Uh, this one.
No, I'm just, I mean, you said some positive things, and you got that, I'm trying to do that spot, but I mean, all of it's a positive thing.
I can only speak for the middle schoolers, of course, but, uh, I do.
I think that's a significant change, and then maybe Dr. Rogers wants to talk about, you know, just pursuit of, of, their, of, and, and the way to learn, to learn earlier in the day, or later in the day, which is a worse effect on, on.
Right, I think our middle schoolers do come in a little more late and, and ready to learn, uh, a little better. You know, that hour shift, we start at seven-thirty. It surprisingly had more impact, I think, on adults than the kids. But, uh, I do think the kids are handling it fine, uh, just knowing that there's that little bit of delay in the morning. Their bodies, they're, they're staying up later, they're doing that, and stuff. So, I, I think it's been beneficial. I don't have any mapped out, um, to, to look at that, but I think looking at kids, um, when they come in in the morning, greeting them, it's a lot different than at seven-thirty, because someone would be here at, like, seven, and middle schoolers just aren't ready to function at that, at their time.
Um, teachers report that they actually see a huge difference in engagement at their earlier time, the little ones. You have some families, it was a challenge to, 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 they're, um, that early, um, the house, I met with a family today, that their job is up, um, at five o'clock every morning, so they're in the break room all the time, because, you know, you, so, it, it's a very family-to-family, um, situation. Our test scores are better than other, are done in morning, and we can, if we're looking at that academic data, we're definitely in the right direction. The rest seems to be just a very individualized, family-to-family preference with the, with their time, so.
All right, others? I heard, yeah. Anything else? Excellent. So, we are now, we're just going to adjourn into a second session, but the appointment, employment compensation, this is, this is, this is, this is, the ways that the district legal pounds, the district, in putting here in testimony of, like, last, against an employee or against a, um, last, you guys, employee who are against legal counsel of the district, to turn, to the meeting. And the collective motion matters between the district and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or two classes, the East, they may have a motion to adjourn into a second session.
Dale? Kindell, yes. Rorod? Hoppin? Castler, yes. Walker? Yaffe?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.